You haven't seen her run?
No.
Let's call the regular board meeting, the Work County Board of Education to order for March the 12th, 2024. If you will all stand, we'll ask Ms. Toni Nelson to say the prayer and I will say the pledge.
Everyone, please bow your heads. Dear Father, thank you so much for bringing us together tonight for our meeting of our district, Father. But most of all, thank you for continuing to put a hedge around all of us, Father, and watching over our children and our staff. Lord, we ask you to give us wisdom and guidance tonight in making the decisions for our district. And, Lord, we just ask you to continue to watch over our children within our community. This we ask in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
You say the, uh, say the prayer, didn't you? Say the pledge along with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you have the agenda before you, which also that we worked on at work session last night. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second it.
All right, Mr. Buster Tire made the motion and Ms. Toni Nelson seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Superintendent, presentations.
Yes, sir. Tonight, we have Dr. Lynn Barber, our assistant superintendent, as well as our CTA director. He's going to come up and make a few comments.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. As y'all may remember, last month, we celebrated Career Technical and Agriculture Education Month, and one of our students, Mr. David Hodges, was unable to be with us that night due to a family emergency. And thankfully, we have the opportunity to recognize David tonight. He is here with his family, his dad and his brother here. And David, I'm going to let you come on up and stand by the superintendent. And, you know, last month, we spoke about students that are getting the skills in class or putting those skills to work, and then they have a career plan. And David is a great example of that. David has been in the culinary arts program. He finished the pathway, and now he's a work-based learning student in the culinary arts Gator Bistro. And he is the sous chef. Is that correct, David? And tell them what that means.
The sous chef is the second person in charge. So then you have your head set and then right up on the end, you have the sous chef.
So he is the second person in charge in the Gator Bistro. And not many students get that opportunity, but he's getting some, not only culinary skills, but management skills because David, and you met Angelita last month, they manage the restaurant, they assign tasks and get to do all of that good stuff. So David is a leader in our FCCLA program and plans to go to culinary arts school after graduation, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we are proud to recognize David tonight. So if Mr. Smith has presented him, let's give him a round of applause.
Great job.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Golden Achievement.
Yes, sir. We'll bring up Ms. Hines from Memorial Drive, principal of Memorial Drive, with our March Golden Achievement Award. And Ms. Waters will come up since Memorial Drive was in her business.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It is with great pleasure that tonight we will recognize Ms. Betty Buford as Memorial Drive's Golden Achievement recipient. Ms. Buford does an outstanding job getting to know her students on a personal and academic level. She learns their interests and uses that information to engage them in learning. She is a cheerleader for her students in the classroom and in their activities outside of the school. Her schedule is busy with her own family, but you can often see that she is found at her students' games, recitals, or extracurricular activities, encourage them to do their best. Her students all know that they are loved. Ms. Buford is a lifelong learner and consistently strives to grow as an educator. She is patient, she's extremely creative, and willing to lend a helping hand. She has been a GESA teacher, a member of our school council and PTO, participates in Leadership Day, a member of the media committee. Thank you, Ms. Buford, for all that you do. And next, we have, we are excited to recognize Ms. Esther Williams as Memorial Drive Elementary's Classified Golden Achievement recipient. Ms. Williams is a dedicated educator who cares about the well-being of students. She is dependable, patient, encouraging, and always willing to lend a helping hand. She has several years of perfect attendance. In addition to helping create a positive classroom culture, she often assists in communication with Spanish-speaking students and parents, and she does so with a smile. She helps with GESA and is always a friendly face around the school that students respect and the staff love. And we appreciate all Ms. Williams adds to our school.
The next one is Board Member Appreciation.
This week is School Board Appreciation Week, and we're very appreciative of the schools that sent all the goodies last night.
Yes.
And then Memorial Drive, I break that call, the form. Very appreciative of that. So, but our board, very appreciative of our board for the work they've put in to make the best decisions for our kids. They, is in pretty status for how many years in a row now?
I lost count.
It's been so many years in a row. We thank the board members for all of your time and effort because you do have the kids at the forefront of every decision we make, and we're truly grateful for that. So if y'all might come up here and we'll get a picture. Coach Gaines, you'll be able to make it up here.
We can stand.
We can stand. Coach Gaines with us. Thanks, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, Ms. Randy Waters. Uh, Mr. Dennis Dahl. Uh, Mr. Buster Tire. Mr. Jared Ethrich.
Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Toni Nelson.
Can you hear them?
Yeah, I'm getting around to things.
No, 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 no. I, I.
Don't you let somebody in your wife get us.
But just make sure you smile real big.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Was it something we said?
Yeah, we got to go.
Okay, item number six.
Yes, and payroll and disbursements as of February 29th, 2024, $6,408,812.86. The financial report was given, Ms. Channing, last night. Enrollment report as of March 5th reflects 5,940 students. Last year's number was 5,959. Counter date's coming up. We have third quarter report cards on March 13th, spring break, April 1st through 5th, and fourth quarter progress reports issued on April 24th. Also, we have our lunch at Memorial Drive on Thursday, but also the state rifle match is Saturday. And I don't know our times yet when we will be over at the rifle range. So those are the dates I have right now.
Okay. All right. You've heard the report, Superintendent. Do you have a motion?
So, up. Second it.
All right, Ms. Waters made the motion. Ms. Etheridge seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number seven, approved minutes of the meeting. You've all had the chance to look over that. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the last month's meetings?
So moved.
Second it.
All right, Coach Gaines made the motion. Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number eight.
Yes, recommend for approval of the SPOS performance audit for fiscal year 2023. The audit results concluded that Work County School District's SPOS program is operating in compliance with all applicable laws and regulations, the referendum approved by the state or the county citizens, and industry best practices.
All right, you heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, Mr. Tire made the motion. Coach Gaines seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number nine.
Yes, recommend for approval of the annual financial audit report for fiscal year 2023.
All right, you heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Waters made the motion. Coach Gaines made, seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 10, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, recommend for approval of the agreement with Work Children's Initiative for Work County Board of Education to be the fiscal agent.
All right, heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All right, Ms. Etheridge made the motion. Mr. Tire seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 11.
Yes, recommend for approval of the agreement between Mercer University's Tiff College of Education and Work County Schools outlining field experience details for students in the teacher education program. This agreement will allow teacher education students to complete clinical practice field experience placements in the Work County School system.
All right, you heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Nelson made the motion. Mr. D seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 12, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, recommend for approval of partnering with the Etowah Foundation and South Georgia State College to employ a certified staff member to provide funding for an Etowah Foundation Future Center at Work County High School. The Etowah Foundation Future Centers is a career and college guidance program working with high school students and non-traditional students to transition them into the next phase of life. The overall cost of the program will be split between Work County Schools, South Georgia State College, and the Etowah Foundation. Work County Schools' costs will be $26,000 and will be funded through the dual enrollment funds from Work County High School.
All right, heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Etheridge made the motion. Mr. D seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 13.
Yes, recommend for approval of the appointment of a delegate and alternate delegate for the Georgia School Board Association.
Okay, I believe if memory serves me correct, Mr. D said that he would be our delegate, and Mr. Tire said that he would be our alternate. This is for the summer conference. It happens at the Summer Conference in Savannah. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I second it.
All right. Coach Gaines sounds like he's done that before.
Read the joy.
He made the motion. Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discuss, any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 14.
Yes, recommend for approval of the Georgia School Board Association's legislative positions.
All right, we had, you've had a chance to look over those. They're very similar from what they were last year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Waters made the motion to approve. Mr. Tire seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 15.
Yes, recommend for approval of the request for Work County High School to continue to partner in the STEM internship program with the Wake Cross Chamber of Commerce for the summer of 2024. This program has been very successful in the past and has afforded many students valuable internship opportunities.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Nelson made the motion. Coach Gaines seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 16.
Yes, recommend for approval of the request from the CTA Director to purchase the Scotsman 5014 ET ironworker machine from Airgas in the amount of $17,925.93 for the welding pathway at Work County High School. The purchase will be funded with Perkins Improvement and QBE funds.
All right, heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, Mr. D's made the motion. Coach Gaines seconded. Any discussion?
I'd say when I was teaching welding, you can't cut enough metal apart with a torch. Twenty students can't weld back together in just a few minutes. With an ironworker, you can take care of the business. When we finally got one, it just makes all the difference.
That's great. That's great. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 17.
Yes, recommend for approval of the request from the Director of CTA to purchase a BN 220 printer cutter to be used in the business and marketing pathways in the amount of $7,295. The purchase will be covered with S3 funds.
All right, heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Uh, Coach Gaines made the motion. Mr. D seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 18.
Yes, recommend for approval of the request to purchase band instruments for Work Middle School in the amount of $11,811. The funding source will be S3.
Heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second it.
Uh, Ms. Etheridge made the motion. Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item 19.
Yes, recommend for approval of the request to purchase instruments for Wake Cross Middle School in the total amount of $33,907.32. The funding will come from the S3 grant.
Heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, Mr. Tire made the motion. Ms. Waters seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 20.
Yes, recommend for approval of final payment request for Work County Middle School Cafeteria Roof Repairers in the amount $2,000 to children's roofing. The roofing project is now complete.
All right, heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, Coach Gaines made the motion. Mr. D seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 22.
21.
21?
Yes, right.
Yes, yes.
Yes, recommend for approval of field trip request at center of Ruskin Way Collin Wells Burner at Work County High School.
All right, heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Nelson made the motion. Mr. D seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 22 now.
Yes, recommend for approval of the fundraisers at Work County High School.
All right, only one school fundraiser. That's good. Uh, I, you heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, and Mr. Tire made the motion. Ms. Waters seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, Mr. Superintendent, item number 23.
Yes, recommend for approval of the request for the use of Work Middle Auditorium and Gym Lobby on November 1st through 3rd, 2024 for the Jehovah's Witnesses to host their Bible study classes at usual customary fees. The request was made by Mark Briers.
All right, heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
All right, Coach Gaines made the motion. Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 24.
Yes, recommend for approval of the request for the use of Work Middle School outside athletic facility and track on March 22nd, 2024. Rain date is April 12th for the Special Olympics with a waiver of fees. The request is made by Lance Adamson of the Work County Recreation Department.
All right, heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Etheridge made the motion. Mr. Tire seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 25.
Yes, recommend for approval of the request from Transportation Director on behalf of Work County 4H for the use of the school bus and driver transport children to Rock Eagle 4H camp. The request is made with a waiver of fees.
Heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, Mr. Tire made the motion. Coach Gaines seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 26. Anybody need executive session? All right, item number 20.
We're good.
Okay, item number 27 then. Approved Superintendent's evaluation and contract. We discussed this last night, and I'll handle it. I don't want him to have to handle his own stuff there. So do I have a motion to approve Superintendent's evaluation and contract that we discussed last night?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. D's made the motion. Ms. Waters seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, item number 28. I'll turn it back over to you.
I recommend for approval of the administrator list for the 24, 25 school year.
All right, heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, Ms. Etheridge made the motion. Ms. Waters seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, item number 29.
Yes, recommend for approval of the personnel report and some items A, B, C, and D as presented.
All right, you heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All right, Coach Gaines made the motion. Coach Gaines made the motion, and Mr. Tire made second. Any discussion?
I abstain.
All right, Ms. Etheridge abstained because of family, close family situation. Uh, any more? Any discussion, any more discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, Mr. Superintendent, item number 30.
Yes, recommend for approval of the request from the Director of Human Resources to send a total compensation statement to all TRS eligible employees. The statements will be created specifically to represent each employee's salary. The statements will be sent to each employee in September of each year.
All right, heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, Mr. D's made the motion. Mr. Tire seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 31.
Yes, sir. I recommend for approval of the request to change the position for credit repair recovery from the contracted position to a full-time teaching position at Work County High School.
All right, heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Nelson made the motion. Ms. Waters seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 32, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, recommend for approval of the request from the Special Ed Director for the following positions. Elementary self-contained to be determined, co-teacher at center, co-teacher at Work Middle, co-teacher at Wake Cross Middle, and co-teacher at Work County High. All positions will be QB funded as, based on the caseload from February 2024.
All right, heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
All right, Mr. Tire made the motion. Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, item number 33.
Yes, recommend for approval of the request from the Director of Special Ed to create a new position for a behavior specialist. This will be a district-wide position to help with MTSS students with disabilities to facilitate the behavioral framework. The position will be funded through title funding.
All right, heard the recommendation, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Etheridge made the motion. Mr. D seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number 34.
Yes, recommend for approval of the summer work schedule for full-month employees.
Okay. Uh, do I have a recommendation?
So moved. Second.
All right, Coach Gaines made the motion. Mr. Tire seconded. Any discussion here and now? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Nay. All right, the next thing is other. We'll start with Ms. Nelson on the other other.
Well, first of all, I want to thank all the schools who gave and contribute to us on our appreciation. You guys have outdone yourselves. I thought last year it was great. This year it was even better. I don't know how you can outdo yourself anymore better than that, but we want to say thank you. You don't have to, and I appreciate it. I want to say also, we're going into our spring break. We ask that everyone be safe, um, safe and have a great time, but remember to always be safe and return back to school. And after spring break, guys, it's downhill after that. But that's it.
All right, Ms. Etheridge.
I'd like to also thank the schools for thinking of us and let it be known that we definitely appreciate each and every one of you and our students. And also, I want to say congratulations to the band, Go Gators!
All right, Mr. Tire.
I'll just echo what they said. I'm very appreciative of each of the schools appreciating us, but we really appreciate them.
Yes.
And the faculties and the work that they do with our students every day.
Yes, all right. Coach Gaines?
Uh, like you said, I just echo whatever else is said and appreciate all the, also like to say, I appreciate all the thoughts and prayers and cards that I've had in my little incident. And I will say this, you learn how fast something can happen to someone. In a split second, things can change. So as we said, I hope all our students and staff are safe as they go about their daily activities and also their, enjoy spring break. And everyone, thanks, safety first. Thank you.
All right, Mr. D's?
Like everybody else, I appreciate all the staff, everybody. Start top to bottom, bottom to top, if there is a bottom. Because we all start off, we all import it. So we wouldn't rank anybody. Also, if you didn't get to attend the hog show last night, it was very successful. Like when I walked in the door, Mr. Dr. Barber said, history has been made. So the grand champion and the reserve champion, which is the top two out of all the pigs shown, were students from Wake Cross Middle.
Right, that's good.
So SPOS is very important to everybody in the county.
Yes.
So kids would not have, I don't, I don't think COVID allowed to have a pig pen in the backyard of town. But thankfully, they don't have to because we have a facility. If they're interested in and up to it, they can keep animals on site. And they did, and they did a great job doing it. And also, those teachers did a great job selecting those animals, and then those kids did a great job raising those animals and training them. So very appreciative of all that every day. And having been there, and if you've been to the hog show in places where you've had it before, it was cool in the little breeze, you froze to death. If it wasn't, you heated to death. And the animals did as well, and it's okay. So we really appreciate that every time I ride by. Thank you.
Ms. Waters?
In February, I had the privilege of attending the Georgia Quiz Bowl competition here in our district. There were about 14 teams, if I remember correctly. All of our schools did very well, and it was a very well-organized event. I was very proud that one of the Ruskin teams won the citizenship award. And so we're a competitive district. We want to win. We want to be number one. But I was very proud that Ruskin demonstrated the characteristics and the respect that we want all of our students to demonstrate. So I was very proud of them and proud of all 14 teams for their competing that evening. So fun event, and happy spring break to everyone.
Okay.
Just glad to have Coach Gaines with us. And just, like you said, life just goes by so fast. But I'm just, I'm blessed and grateful, and I'm just thankful.
I echo what everyone said about the schools outdid themselves this go-around. We appreciate the gifts of that, but more importantly, we appreciate what they do for the kids every day, or students every day. Some of them, some of those students, the only friendly face they see is the teacher. And once again, would like to thank everyone for And once again, would like to thank everyone for, or all the schools for all the goodies there. At this time, I would like to read the March 2024 condolences. The family and friends of Terry Brandon, former paraprofessional and teacher in the Warrick County School System. Lacy Drudge, paraprofessional at Williams Heights, and the loss of her grandmother, Edna Collins. Deborah Combs, custodian, and the loss of her father-in-law. Leslie Five Ash, paraprofessional at Ruskin, and the loss of her father, Ernest Damu. Debbie and John Smith Senior, John Junior, Olivia Smith, and the loss of Debbie's mother, John Junior's grandmother, Betty Barber, John Senior, John Junior, and Olivia are all employed at the Warrick County High, at Warrick County High, and Debbie is a recent retiree. The family and friends of Judy Henderson, who retired from teaching at Wackon Elementary School after 30 years of service. Erin Jeffords, teacher at Wackon Elementary, and the loss of her grandmother. Yvonne Jeffers. Darlene Todd, SIS Coordinator at Central Office, and the loss of her mother, Geneva Murphy. Michelle and Marcus Watson, teachers at Warrick Middle and Center Elementary, and the loss of Michelle's father, Kenneth Walker. Selena Thomas, paraprof at Ruskin, and Lottie Thomas, teacher at Warrick County High, and the loss of their mother, grandmother, Margaret Thomas. Sharika Dotson, paraprof at Williams Heights, and the loss of her brother, Morris Clark. Don, Don Kroom, paraprof at Warrick Middle, and Danisha Kroom Lewis, paraprof at Center, and the loss of their grandmother, Effie James. Stormy Parton, teacher at Warrick Middle, and the loss of her mother-in-law, Diane Parton. Sarah Arnold, paraprof at Ruskin, and the loss of her brother, Donald Shane Bennett Junior. Robin Griffin, nutrition assistant at Ruskin, and the loss of her stepson, Bijji Griffin. And Stacy Smallwood, Assistant Principal at Wackon Elementary, and the loss of her father, Jesse Lindsay. We'd like to keep all of these in our thoughts and prayer. Without any other, if there's nothing else to be said, this meeting is adjourned.